It's 5:30, time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone that's here today that come out in the heat, so hopefully this meeting won't last too terribly long. And anyway, there are a couple of items that need to be added to the agenda, and there are two executive sessions. Okay? So with that, gentlemen...
What are the items to be added?
Two executive sessions.
Oh, just that, okay.
Yes, uh-huh, just that.
After the marathon we had last week on the procurement policy, I assumed we'd be talking about that tonight. Did we decide to do that another time?
That's going to be another time.
Next time, or soon?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so you've had a chance to look at the agenda. Any questions about it? You want?
No.
Okay. Make a motion that we adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving to public hearings.
Consent?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Common consent agenda. You've all had a chance to look at that. Any questions concerning that?
No, none for me.
None for me?
No.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the common consent agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. I was excited to get to the condemnations.
Of course, how could you not be?
Well, they're highlighted in yellow, and that really caught my eye. So, Don?
Yes?
Okay.
How are you?
I'm doing good. I understand this concerns a public hearing to consider condemnation of 513 West Cottonwood Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I've talked to Mr. Johnson that owns this property. He's working on cleaning it, starting some repairs, getting it in order. Spoke to him, his opinion and his feeling that he'll be able to spend the time and get repairs completed in two months. We would like to revisit this in two months before we consider condemnation. We're happy with what he's doing, what he plans to do, and he seems sincere, and so we would like to revisit this in two months. So if we could adjourn this for 60 days, that would be staff's recommendation.
Okay, all right. I'm going to open up the hearing to the public. Anyone here that, from the neighborhood, would like to address this property? All right, then I will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, do you have questions for Don?
I drove by yesterday, and they were in there washing walls. Looked like it's, they're intent on getting it turned around.
Yeah, I mean, and this is, these are the kind of things we like to see. These are, this is the direction we like to see things going.
Yeah, no kidding.
We certainly would like to encourage him to keep doing that. We don't see anything to indicate that he won't do that, so.
Seemed like the damage was just to that one spot, other than smoke.
Yeah, mainly smoke damage throughout, and some on the exterior and that, what is it, the southwest corner of the structure. Yeah, I mean, it's not too awfully bad, and so.
This looks like a minimal amount of, a lot of labor, but maybe not a whole lot of materials bringing this up to, to have the ball again.
And he's hired people to do it, so he's demonstrated, in my opinion, that he has the means and to get this done, so.
Okay. And he was pretty confident that the 60-day time period would be enough time?
Speaking with him, it seemed that would be more...
In line?
Two months would be kind of the long end of it.
Okay.
He's anticipating it getting done quicker.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, no further questions?
No.
Okay, so we're looking at revisiting this in 60 days? That's your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
And that would make that...
August 22nd.
August 22nd. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We adjourn the public hearing for 60 days and re-arrive in August 22nd.
My second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, item B. Public hearing to consider condemnation of 301 North 11th Street. Don?
So initially, there was a new roof put on. Excitement to do repairs. Something has changed. We have not had any contact from the owner for several months. We've tried several times to contact her, especially this week. There have been no messages returned from our messages. We have, in the interim, received several complaints from the neighbors, some of them very adamant that people going in and out, the condition of the home, nothing being done on it here in the last couple of months, and they would like to see us move towards condemnation. It would be staff's recommendation to move towards condemnation to try to help move this process along if they are intent on repairing it.
Okay. I'll open this up to the public. Anyone here representing 301 North 11th, or anyone from that neighborhood that would like to address the commission? All right, I will close the public hearing. Don, I was doing some filing of some papers, a stack of papers, and I actually ran across this when this lady came, come before the commission by the name of Sandra Villalobos. Is that right? Okay. And at that time, matter of fact, I drove by and saw them actually repairing the roof on it. So, is the house itself, is it not secured that people are getting into the house?
That's our understanding, yes. Some of the neighbors are very, very concerned about what's going on at the house. Complain to me that they're, they have safety concerns for the children and different things with that. We have not had any contact since this. I don't know what the situation is with Ms. Villalobos, or initially, we had met, walked through the house, discussed what needed to be done. They told me that they were going to put a new roof on it, and within a week, they had started putting a roof on it. So I was very excited that this project, that this house would move along, but things have come to a grinding halt, and nothing has been done, and we've had no contact and no response to our letters or phone calls.
Was the roof completed?
I think almost all of the roof is completed. There is a section that still, believe, needs to be completed, but I believe there's a section over the porch that still needs to be done.
Okay. And what were the other issues with the house when you went into the house?
Ceilings and floors and walls and different things. There had been a fire in one of the bedrooms, so there was some fire damage and smoke damage throughout the, throughout the structure. There were some electrical issues that we discussed as well, some of them related to the fire, but most of them not related to the fire. Like I say, we were, I mean, I was impressed. Usually when people say, "Well, get right on it," it doesn't mean they know that they need to, I think that's the line that they think they need to tell me, and usually they don't get right on it, but this, within a week, they had started the roof. And so I was very hopeful that things would move along and go, but it has come to a grinding halt, and like I say, we've got, I've received several phone calls from neighbors that are concerned about the activity and it being open. And so, as we know, the condemnation process doesn't mean this will be tore down, but it does give some impetus to move forward.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Gentlemen, either one?
No, none for me.
The last letter that was sent was dated February 19th. Was there any other notification of the meeting tonight?
No, and I looked in the file today, or yesterday, I saw a letter from May, I believe, to let them know that this was scheduled. So I know that there's been contact, there's been mailing since then, and then I've also tried to call her several times, and I get no response.
Yeah, the last one that was in our packet was in February. I just wanted to confirm. So she's had opportunity to respond?
Yes, she has.
Okay.
So, Gary, you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, so your recommendation is to move forward with condemnation of 301 North 11th. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Any further questions?
No.
All right. I make a motion that we move to condemn 301 North 11th Street as dangerous and unsafe.
My second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item C. Public hearing to consider condemnation of 208 North 17th.
Yes, at the last meeting, the owner was here and discussed, we had, you had discussed her submitting a timeline to get repairs done. Hadn't been submitted before. I have had no contact in the intervening 30 days from her with the timeline. I have had one call from an electrician that had asked me that he was going to prepare a bid, and had asked me questions in regards to him preparing a bid, but I have had no contact from the owner about a timeline. Well, no contact at all, but the contact was to go over a timeline of repairs.
Okay, and this, I lose track of time, but...
This was originally a fire. Had fire and smoke damage to the property.
And was she here like 30 days ago?
30 days ago, yes.
I kind of vaguely remember the scenario. Okay, and the issues, was the fire contained to just one room?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. There was smoke damage throughout, but in the, there were a lot of electrical problems from a home electrician. And so there were a lot of issues, like I said. Now, these were taken earlier this week. I believe the pictures were taken either Tuesday, I believe. I mean, I mean, so the yard is being mowed and kept up, but the direction last time was to, just to submit a timeline in the 30 days, and that was the direction before, no timeline was submitted. There's a 30 days extended to get a timeline, and we have not received a timeline.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have concerning that. Gentlemen?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing. I'll move forward that I make a motion that we move that 208 North 17th Street be condemned as dangerous and unsafe. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Item four. Items for commission action. A, consider partnering with S E K, Senior Safety and Wellness Coalition for the health on purpose health fair at the Civic Center on September 20, 2019. All right, Kathy, how are you?
Our coalition would just like to ask, we work together to provide the health fair for the surrounding community in Independence. We would just like to ask if there was any chance that again this year that the commission would allow us to use this facility for that without having the charge. We would be setting up on the 19th, starting at 1, and being done at 5, and then on Friday, it would be, it would be early. It would be 6:00 in the morning because we open at 7:00 to provide the lab work and all for the community at a discounted price. And then, and that's what our funds are used for, is to help offset some of the costs for people to be able to come in and do that at a cheaper rate. And then, we would be out of here around 1:00 to 2:00 in the afternoon, well, actually, it'd be a little bit later than that, but it officially ends 12:30 taking down, so then moving stuff out of here. And if we would need to pay any extra for the early morning hours of the staff here, we would be happy to do that, but we were hoping that maybe the fee would be waived for that.
Okay, Kathy? Thank you. How many years has this particular fair, wellness fair, been put on here in Independence?
I don't know exactly how many years, but I started in my job in 2010, and it was going on then, so it's been quite a few years. We usually have anywhere from 200 to 400 people that come and attend. There are vendors from all over the area, and nobody sells anything. They're not allowed to do that, but a lot of them are providing services to people in the communities, and so it's an opportunity for people to come in and learn about services that are available to them. We have a lot of screenings that are done for free at the time. The Montgomery County Health Department, a lot of times, comes and does the flu shots and everything at that time, so it's very beneficial for the community to have it.
And this is open to...
Anyone.
Anyone?
Anyone. It's not just for seniors.
For seniors?
It's for anyone. Probably about four or five years ago, we tried to start gearing it more for anybody in the community, even though it is our Senior Safety and Wellness Coalition, but it is open to anybody.
And have you seen the attendance of this continue to grow since you've been in charge of this?
It has been, yes. Yeah. And I'm a co-chair for the Southeast Kansas Senior Safety and Wellness Coalition, and it's participants that provide services throughout the area that participate in that.
Okay. And that's all the questions that I have. Gentlemen?
Is this the one that, you also have the blood work screening?
Yes.
And I did notice in your, there was a registration form for vendors, but you do charge your vendors for attending, and what does the money go that you raise for selling the spots?
So, the, some of the money is used to bring down the cost of the lab work and everything for people. And then we also do a quarterly luncheon, and some of the funds are used to reduce the price for people to come in and learn about. For example, we had Steve Carr from the Attorney General's Office, the last one here in town, and so people were able to come to lunch at a discounted price and then hear from him about scams and how to protect themselves and things like that. So that's what the funds are used for.
So it's kind of a continuation, the funds for that are generated for other seminars for...
Correct.
The community?
Yes. Yes, and anybody is welcome to come to all those luncheons also.
Okay. Okay, good.
Gary?
I think it's a great event.
Okay, let's do it. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. All right, I move to partner, I make a motion that we move to partner with S E K, Senior Safety and Wellness Coalition for the Health on Purpose Health Fair to be held at the Civic Center on September 20, 2019. Do I have a second?
My second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item B. Consider approving bids for a new tractor and brush hog for use in the street department. Mike, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good.
We had received bids on June 20th for tractor and brush hog for the street department to replace a 1977 tractor brush hog. We got seven bids come back in, as you can see, then I reviewed the bids, looked at specs, looked at coming in within budget, and other things I looked at is, you know, parts and service availability and the distance that this machine might need service. And the first three did not meet specs. The other John Deere did, but it was not low bid, and if you look down at construction sales and service, the fifth one there, the LS tractor, which I had never heard of an LS before, but this construction sales and service is located in Crestview, Florida, which is 900 miles from here, and this tractor's made in South Korea. Ship to them, they do some final assembly, ship it here, and then it's yours.
You're the proud owner.
You're the proud owner. Well, what I'm saying, though, there are dealers in Tulsa and Mount Ridge. Mount Ridge is north of Wichita, looking at 120 miles. And then, if you go on down Lang Diesel, they came in over budget, was, the budget was $50,000. So the John Deere that I'm recommending was not low bid, but it was the next, over the low bid. And Prairieland Partners, if you know, that's who bought O'Malley's out, which is servicing parts is just about a mile west of here. So that's why I recommended the John Deere.
Okay. Yeah, because you have to take into consideration, you're buying something that's foreign-made, the availability of parts.
Right.
And if you have a service dealer here and parts available, they can pretty well get any part overnight, John Deere.
And all the John Deeres that are listed here are made in Georgia.
Okay. So you're not looking, you wouldn't be looking at a lot of downtime, which you might if you had...
And like I said, the LS is built in South Korea, the Massey Ferguson is built in two places, Brazil and China, and the Mahindra is built in India. So, I kind of took that into consideration, too.
All right. Well, it's got a five-year or 2,000 hours, whichever comes first. Any year's time, how many hours roughly would you estimate you might put on it? And I'm not going to hold you to a set figure, but just a rough ballpark.
A couple hundred or so.
Couple hundred a season. Okay.
Just depends on the use.
Okay. Okay. That's all the questions I have. Gentlemen?
None for me.
For your item two, there was two different prices, one less than the other one, than what you selected. What was the difference, performance, size? That is a brush hog, isn't it, the item two on the...
Yeah, the brush hog.
Was it just a stronger one, or...
The difference between the MX and the HX is medium duty and heavy duty.
Okay.
And we want to go heavy duty with what we do.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely. Okay.
Any other questions?
That was the only one.
Okay, all right. Then I make a motion that we move to approve the bid from Prairieland Partners in the amount of $43,732.82 for a new John Deere 5065E tractor and HX7 brush hog. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, item number five, discussion. This is A, consider items requested by Commissioner Koflish, and I'll read these through. Number one, review of the code enforcement department relating to code and construction review. Item number two, review city ADA direction regarding A, the city transition plan and the elimination of the attachments; B, the identification of city non-compliant ADA issues; C, selection of consultant for guidance regarding ADA compliance; and three, creation of an economic development advisory board per Division II, Section 2 dash 266 through Section 2 dash 70. Okay?
Yeah, we'll go through one by one on these items. The first one, we'll do a little PowerPoint presentation, walk you through the items we do regarding the permit process.
Yeah, maybe I could explain first what brought this up and kind of what I see, and then that would be fine, I guess, but, you know, when we were looking at the water service entrance with the brewery, there were some changes in the water line size on the sprinkler that he brought up, and then the discussion that I had with him prior to the meeting was different than what we received here. And looking through the drawings further, there's code review sheet plus the data in the construction drawings, and to do a code review, it's so detailed that you have to be familiar with the code and the process you're going, and it's hard for an individual to, you know, look at all the code issues, do general construction progress, and it can overwhelm the department. And code review is critical for us to protect life safety. And to expect, you know, Don to be proficient in code review is a little much. That's constant review, just like when you look at the brewery, for example, you've got a building that's got mixed occupancy, you've got to determine the occupancy of each group in there, then you've got to look at the code to determine that, then you've got to trace to see what's required for that occupancy, but then you've got to chase the rabbit to other areas of area separations, and it's also intertwined that it's so difficult to keep track of what goes on in that code review to know what's included in the job, the construction process, because then you get into area separations, there've got to be UL listed assemblies, there can't be components, and it's a lot to expect our building officials to be proficient in that. And there's firms that specialize in plan review. You know, we don't have, well, maybe, is five or six commercial jobs a year kind of stretching? But that code review is so critical because it gives them, Don then, direction, if he's the one inspecting construction, it gives him the direction what to look for going out. And it sets up the process from everything that hinges in the drawings. So at that point, it can be either accepted or rejected. So there's an advantage of utilizing a firm that specializes in code review that it takes, since we only have five or six projects a year to require the service, to hire somebody proficient in reviewing a code, it's just not feasible. So if we contract with a consultant outside, and it would be an independent consultant, not someone within the town, then it gives us the advantage to specialize our effort more in construction review, and then it gives them a resource to go back to explaining what does comply, where the problems are they see, and it makes it a lot easier for code enforcement once the project starts construction. Again, that it's not unusual for a project to be rejected at code review because of things that are non-compliant. I've had to resubmit times. You look at the occupancy group can be wrong, a requirement, a special use, something in it that just is overlooked, and that gives us the separate eyes to do that critical task for us, and then a reference point to go back. Then, you know, with our projects for the time that's committed to observing construction, then it lets us focus more on those areas of where we need to, instead of taking time to get proficient with all the codes and then review the drawings, mark up the drawings if they're rejected, write up what's rejected, come back, identify that, then send them out, then review again, and by looking at marking with a specialty company that reviews construction drawings, then because there's special submittals required also at times to be reviewed, fire alarm, fire sprinkler system, and, you know, it's more than one code that we're under specialty, NFPA for fire and alarm, you know, the ADA, it helps with that, but the International Building Code and any other code, it really would simplify our operation at this time till we get to the point that we really have enough plan review to require that. One possibility I mentioned was a firm that specializes in it, but there could be a possibility of, Pittsburgh has a plan review department and code... possibility of Pittsburgh has a plan review department in code enforcement. Maybe we could contract with them to review our drawings, or Wichita, or Kansas City, another city that's using similar codes. But I thought with what we saw that we were confronted with with the water meter set, and and there was a note on the drawing that informed the contractor that it was his responsibility to contact with the utility companies. So, you know, and and these review of not only the code footprint, but also the construction drawing review, because, you know, the the size of a a project varies from ten or fifteen sheets to, I had a church that was sixty sheets. So it can be real time consuming for our limited staff to do a thorough plan review. So, um, I thought if we consider looking beyond our own resources, then it it gives us a an independent set of eyes reviewing, gives us then somebody to, uh, that specializes and stays current with all the codes, and it it focuses our time then of just observing construction, uh, once the project is is underway. And then it still gives that contact of the 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 landmarks of is a sprinkler required? Is it not required? Is a a fire alarm required? Is it not required? But then also the inspections that are required to approve those, or, you know, even if if an elevator, what what are the tests that need to be performed, and who does those? It it would be a great asset to our our construction department and relieve some of our liability in in the plan review process. So.
We and we don't disagree with that. We're actually evaluating the greater use of outside assistance in evaluating plans. I mean, we have done it already. I mean, we do that. We haven't contracted specifically with a firm that does that, but we're certainly evaluating the cost of that. And and like you say, if there's other, if there's a city that has the has the capacity to to contract, they've got more inspectors than they do projects and can contract that out. But we're looking at that. But we want to go through the process that we are using now that the team has been working on developing to make sure we make sure we get everything covered, whether it's our inspector or or plan reviewer or done by an outside firm. So we just got a short PowerPoint we could zip through, about five slides to kind of show you what we're doing.
Sure, then we can go to questions on the presentation.
Mayor, thank you, and Commissioner Koflish and Hogshead, we appreciate this opportunity. Craig contacted me back, it was right at the end of April or May, and we had a visit, and Craig identified that we were had issues, that we needed to strengthen our code enforcement related to our strategic plan. So we started immediately developing a process, uh, putting a team forward. And as Commissioner Koflish indicated, code footprint is a vital part of that plan. This process of what we did or what we've done and put together now to help us going forward is we created a team that helps Don and helps make us more efficient, more responsive to the applicant, the owner, and the contractors, and try to get these questions out in front before we get into a building process, a permit has been issued, and now we're dealing with problems down the road. And part of that was Don, as Leonard said, it is a tremendous load when you take on a project, trying to keep track of it, changes, inspections, documentation, and the whole part of that. Code footprint and life safety is a major part of that. We are reaching out to some independent people, we are visiting with them and building those relationships as we speak and as we go forward. So that is in the process. Going through part of our team, zone review, which is Kelly Passer, and I will take a minute and tell you what the team consists of. Don Cushion, Terry Liebarger, Mike Passer, Lacey, Kelly, Sean, April, and Craig and myself. Zoning is a critical part of this, and it starts right at the start, and, you know, building use, meeting the district regulations, off-street parking requirements, and sign regulations, making sure that these issues are addressed upfront, giving the owners and the contractors time to submit the proper permits and applications to get this done. If Kelly has to go into zoning and planning, you know, that's a month, sometimes two months to get those, depending on when they submit all of that. We're going to make sure we have the historical review for our great downtown, providing them again with the pamphlets, the process you have to go through to get in front of the historic board so that your plans can be approved. We are not going to approve a building permit in the downtown historical till we see those approvals from the historical society. Neighborhood revitalization, we have a building permit we're in the process of approving right now. It's here because of the neighborhood revitalization. So making sure those people are aware of that, that they're making application and doing that. We're streamlining our process, and we don't want any more hiccups with our contractors. We want to be upfront from the start as the building permit is issued. So we're going to start right at the start and with Terry in the meetings with us so that we can tell them, is there a water line extension required? Is there a new water meter set required? What's the size cost? Sewer extensions, again, size and cost. Is that fire sprinkler water line going to need to be brought into the building? Again, what's that size cost? We are going to require a stamp drawing from an engineer to get that done, and making sure we get the system development fees required. Additional things that we are looking at with Sean in the room along with Terry, fire hydrant extensions, especially if it's a business that needs coverage, making sure that we have the proper fire hydrants there and the adequate water flow that is needed to for life safety issues, some of just the amenities, some businesses or even residents like the separate lawn sprinkler meters so that they don't have to pay the sewer charges, so making sure those costs. And another thing right up front is providing the contractors with those lead times required. If we can get the information to Terry of the size of the meters, what needs to be on hand, and whether that's a two-week notice or a four-week notice, they know in their project as they're going that they can contact Terry Liebarger and say, hey, we're going to be ready in two weeks. So we want to make sure that information. We also want Mike Passer in the in the room. Access management along the seventy-five corridor is a big part. We're dealing with access management right now on an application, and that has literally slowed the process down. A building that we thought could be permitted and processed and be done in October is now after January twenty twenty, and it's access management that's slowing the process down. So we need to make sure we get them in contact with KDOT, get those applications applied, and get that process going up front. Also, Mike is instrumental in our curb cuts and entrances, in case we need to do any whistles or anything for that. Stormwater review is a big thing. We seem to have more and more rain. I don't, I'm beginning to wonder if it's going to stop in this town right now. But getting our storms drainage studies done, currently we do a ten-year flood plan. I'm encouraging, I think Kelly is too, Craig, from the recent study, we may need to look at that, come back to commission, and we may need to do some of those studies a little more with all the flooding that we've seen recently. But currently, ten-year flood plan for some of the applications is required. We want to make sure again that that information is out. We have alley ingress and egress, especially for businesses, checking that, and some of our businesses require a traffic study or more information. So we want Mike in the room to help us put that information. We also want to, for a business, there are requirements for a sanitation dumpster, not only in screening that dumpster, but that's a big truck that's coming across your parking lot or backing into your entrance. We don't want to crush your concrete or mess up. We want to make sure that we have an upfront discussion with the owner and contractor to put all that in place. Fire review, not only is Sean critical in the code footprint review process, and I've already said some of this, fire hydrant review approval, adequate access for our tower truck, making sure we can get into the business or where the residence, if it's a new area or street. Our water supply review, we have areas in town that we may need to improve water in that area if it's a certain business going in that requires that. So that needs to be reviewed. Fire sprinkler, life safety, and Sean is also important with Don in the final inspection for occupancy. ADA requirements. ADA is hard for us to, there's a lot of gray areas there. So what we ask upfront for, especially businesses and other, we want their plans to come stamped ADA. Let your people look at it, let them stamp it, that they have designed it to the ADA requirements, and then we can come in behind, double-check that, and make sure when we do the occupancy review, but we ask all of them upfront to get it ADA stamped and reviewed prior to submitting their plans for us for building permit. Things that we're looking at are parking ramps, accessible paths, entrances, hardware, bathrooms. Of course, this is more for a business that comes into the community versus a residence.
What is an ADA stamp?
Uh, we asked them to have it reviewed, and they put it on the, it's on the front page, isn't it, Don?
It'd be on the code footprint there.
Yeah, that they have, they designed it to ADA and met the requirements, and everybody so far has been willing to do that and mark it on their plans what the ADA is, and it helps us going forward so that we're not sitting there trying to identify. The parking lots come pre-designed, the ramps, they show us the bathroom, what they've done in the bathroom, all the ADA accessibility that's required, if it's required of them. We're asking them upfront, these are businesses that are serving the public, they're brand-new businesses that are being built, or it's a total renovation that potentially can kick ADA in, and we're asking them upfront to help us with that. And they're very receptive of it, and it works very well. Take some of the, not liability, but some of the pressure off of Don and us as we do our final inspections, making sure that that building meets the ADA requirements. Additional items that does get reviewed, doesn't always kick in, is floodplain review. If it is in the floodplain, Don is the flood manager, there are requirements. You have to build two foot above the floodplain, so we want to make sure that information is out. This typically comes into play when we have new structures, garages, or houses that are being built in the floodplain. And the alcohol, Kelly kind of takes care of this, this would be a business cereal malt beverage. There are location restrictions, and what I mean by that, she has to do a survey of an area if you're so many feet of a church or something that kicks in, or if your yearly gross sales, fifty percent or more for food, there's a, we have to make sure there, again, we want to make sure all of this information is upfront to the contractors. Once we do, once our group meets and we identify all these issues to Don, so it's documented on paper, Don then can sit down with the contractors, the owners, as he does the building permit, go through these things. As Leonard said, there's often a list of, we have these things in code footprint, and we have these other items that you need, we want you aware of, that we need to address before we issue the building permit. Get those things handled up front, that then kicks in the building permit, the inspection process. If you're a business, we're going to be reminding you through the process that occupancy is not going to be allowed till you obtain the proper licenses from the city. Then we go through the final inspections and occupancy. You know, our process now, and we just put the team together, we just went through our first review. I think staff will tell you a lot came out of that review. I think Don will tell you it's helping him, it's taking a lot of the pressure off of him, it's putting this stuff in front of him and helping. We're looking at, next week, we have a new program that will help us to do the whole process with documentation. All of this will be computerized where Don can do it and allows him to notes, allows him to do field notes, everything so that we can document this process the whole way through, and it's not reliant on Don trying to remember to come back to the office and document things as he's doing inspections and other things. So we have a whole process here, and our downtown is vital. I think you gentlemen know that. We have a lot of inquiries about the buildings and a lot of things going on downtown. And I think Craig pushes us, and he pushes us for the right reason. We want economic growth. That grows the city, it increases our sales tax. So if we can be more upfront, more easy to work with, getting this information out, doing a better job in code inspection and what we do, yeah, we had a little slip, we're going to fix it, we're fixing it. The process was in place, and we're going to make it better. So that's kind of what's going on. Whoops, Kelly, I jumped too far.
Now, the process is critical for receiving and and transmitting the information, but the problem you have with code review is no one in staff has the knowledge to do a code review.
And we've identified that, and I think.
But the critical issue, you got to understand, when you're dealing with an existing building, a UL assembly is only allowed for an area separation. So if you're required a two-hour area separation between a business function or an assembly function and residential in an existing building, you can't come in after it's done and put that in.
And and that's why we want to identify these upfront and fix these issues.
And that's where the sprinkler system comes in, that, you know, a two-hour separation is required of the floor if it's not sprinkled, but a one hour is if it's sprinkled. And that assembly is spelled out in the UL assembly manual. So you can't come in after it's built and get that achieved. So, you know, that is where the identification of the code footprint and the the methods that's listed on it are so critical. And, you know, what all you do, and, you know, the the fire alarm testing, the fire sprinkler testing is so critical, and it's such a process of review that I don't think your committee has expertise to do that. That's where what I'm saying with the outside testing.
We are looking outside, we are going to get assistance. And those processes are open right now, and we are making those, we have those, we work very closely with Pittsburgh, we work very closely with Winfield, and and we're, I assure you, we're on top of it.
I'd like to see the firms that you're contacting, just with the other issue. It's, you know, that's the problem that when you look at the code, you can chase an occupancy and their requirement, but it changes when you look at the specifics, particularly with a mixed occupancy building, and you can't.
This was a challenge for us. This is new to, it's new to southeast Kansas, and I give Don credit for what he was, this is a challenge. We don't have this type of application.
And that's why I'm bringing it up to tonight for the commission.
This is, this is new, but we like that. We want growth, and we want to encourage growth. And we will do our part to make sure we encourage growth, and we work with people, and we get it done right. We want the community safe. Sean, Don, and I, we want, we concern, we, we don't want to see anybody get hurt or anything.
Yeah, I think that's what we're looking at, too. We're concerned, too, but, you know, you've got the life safety codes there to protect the safety, and it's not, by enforcing a code, you're not driving away.
Right.
Business.
No, you're exactly right.
If we had wanted to make it easier, then we wouldn't have updated our codes to two thousand twelve.
That's why we've got to get this information out front. We want to be upfront when they're coming in with their building permit, and these are the issues, this is what we want to fix. I don't know if Craig, if you have something you want to add?
I think most, you know, when you get into commercial, statute requires the architect to stamp and the engineers to stamp, so I don't think you're going to have the the problem there. It's just double-checking their data, like the ADA, that's a law that all of us know, and and we get it covered.
Yep.
The main thing is making sure the data that's put on the code footprint.
Right. Right.
Is accurate. And that's where you need independent eyes beyond our town-
Right.
To look at that.
I agree.
And, you know, just looking at means to protect our staff. Because once you get a building ninety percent done and you find that there was an error.
Yep. Not good for anybody, is it?
Not good for anybody.
And we, and we agree with that as I mentioned earlier. The purpose of this team was to put together and make sure all our bases were covered, whether we're doing the inspection or we're farming out the inspection, that the inspection is done by the right person, the right profession, professional person. So we want to make sure we touched all the bases that needed to be done and that a developer would know upfront, this is the process you go through and you may be required to do this or that. But especially if it comes to any stamped drawings and so forth. That's, we just want to make sure we're covering everything and then we're upfront with any developers. As you said, four or five developments a year, it's not a lot. It's not like we can train Don to be a combination inspector, you know, that takes a long time. I mean, could do that, but even then you still might have to farm it out depending on a project. And this is a unique project, but first brewery we've had, so.
Yeah, and as you start developing, you know, even to convert the apartments upstairs, you've gone, you fall into area separations and specific requirements that gets very time-consuming to research and you've got to know where to look. And it's something that for a small town, you know, ideally, we would hire somebody that's skilled in plan review to be head of the department and we'd have two people on staff to, you know, one process paperwork and one to do building inspections and document. And, you know, you've got to archive the drawings to go back. You know, right now, that's not feasible, so the next, what's the next approach? And all you're doing though is you're adding all this work, you formed your committee, but is that all your committee has? No? You know, you look at you, David, you're director of EMS, you're director of code enforcement. You know, you've got a long list of duties and now you added another duty to it.
We're all busy.
And you get to the point that you become counterproductive, so let's streamline it, that we put it in the plan review, we require everything, it's signed off, and then there's no changes because in our codes, when we revised them, we did an excellent job of expanding the areas. We even say that if an architect changes the drawings, he's required to notify the building inspector, the plan review. So we've got it set up that it becomes more critical now to backtrack and say, okay, why didn't you? Where's the change? Because the change not only requires a project architect, but he needs to then have the project engineer that designed the system back up that he did. But, you know, we can't keep working, working our horse with more work to do and killing the horse, then we don't get anywhere.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's-
Oh, I think we all agree with you. And we are, I assure the commission that we are reaching out to that outside help for that and that will be happening. And the group, yes, we are all busy, but it takes that group together to get all of that information to Don so that we can present it.
In the form of a checklist.
Yes.
It's done. Then you hand it to them at building permit time.
And Don can take it from there. And there's, before we get together, there's, that plan review is going on for weeks or that code review. And that's where those things, like you said, that outside agency can help us and other acts, other groups that Don uses to review those plans. So when he comes to us as a group, that part of it's done, so.
The plan review is really, really critical.
And sometimes that can take up to a month, depending on how complicated the project is and how busy Don is.
And that's where somebody outside can do the plan review, give highlights to Don. Don isn't the architect or engineer record, so his inspection is different than the architect and engineer record. He's looking for the major highlights, he's not looking at the nuts and the bolts. So, you know, you got to take some pressure off of him by having somebody point to the highlights for him to know and start getting him in that he doesn't need to be there-
Right.
At every, every corner that the project architect or engineer is. So, so that was my thought. We look at going into budget that we do the, look at some outside consultants and independent, that they're not doing our projects, they're not doing our plan review. They're totally separate entities specializing in that field. The other item or the next item was ADA. We're getting to the end of our one cent sales tax. We'll be looking at, at what to do coming up. Though by setting up the first ten years and quarter, we didn't have actual directions to look at, at specific projects. We've had a lot of, a lot of work accomplished, but where are we going to go to finish up? Back in the beginning of this, Mike Conway had said he and Tony had made a list of the projects dealing with streets since 1982 as a reference point to confirm. Because the ADA deals with two issues, accessibility of service and correction of non-compliant issues in projects that were constructed since 1992. Where we go in the future, where we, what have we got accomplished, what's left to be done? There's still some ramps that are, were installed since 92 that aren't correct. We got the downtown transition plan, which identified areas there that gives us a guide. But to really get an intent direction that we can get some costs so as we, we look at what we're going to do with the one cent sales tax, identifying how much we're going to need specifically for it, it'll be, be important to get that tied down. The consultant we've talked about, they offer, would offer us a chance to develop a more exact plan. We've done work on, on areas that weren't really mandated by ADA, but, you know, they provided some form of accessibility. But, you know, when we were, we were talking that there was something mentioned that we still have ADA work to do here in Memorial Hall. You know, we've got to identify and only do our projects once. In the, in the transition plan for downtown, we had these letters that Tony sent dealing with the cross slope. And we had a letter also attached to it from the Department of Justice. The Department of Justice, referring to Tony's letter, they're not going to approve anything that doesn't comply with the ADA. And one statement I highlight is it's sidewalks that are out of compliance with cross slope. Here, he's talking about the cross slope that is non-compliant. It exceeds the percentage allowed. And where we come back to the last part about a ramp installed to the entrance of the store, that, that doesn't address the, the cross slope at all. So, you know, it's like, I lost a quarter, I'm not looking here because it's too dark. I'm going to look around the corner because lighting's better. You know, we, we need to remove the, the letter from Tony from our transition plan because it's not relevant. It has nothing to do with correcting a, a condition. It's addressing a totally separate condition. And, you know, what we would do is continue with our, our transition plan of how that's going to be addressed in the upcoming years with, with the budget. Are we going to have to remove sidewalks? Are we going to have to do the staggered sidewalk to correct? But taking the transition plan into the next step and the, the letter from the Department of Justice saying that we were compliant and we did a good job, that's not relevant to a, a transition plan either. But, you know, there's responsibilities for the city that we're obligated to do and there's obligations for the building owner. But, you know, we need to really look that we, we get the most addressing our issues with our, our problems. And, you know, those two letters, we reference the zoo plan only in the downtown transitional plan, which doesn't relate to anything about the downtown transitional plan. So, you know, as we look at, at looking for outside help with the ADA that specializes, they can put it in order for us to effectively use our funds and not overspend or address areas that aren't, aren't problems. You know, we can, we can address the two, the post-1992 sidewalks that were non-compliant. The last item, three, in our city ordinance, there is a description of an economic development advisory board. And when I, I saw Craig's email about the strategic plan for it, I thought this would be ideal to catalyze an economic development board that we could establish to, to help them get some guidelines. But you look that the, the board is appointed, it says by the mayor, so it's a typical board for the city. It's made up of seven, seven members and then has the chamber and MAC as ex officio non-voting members. But we could have the members as a cross-section of industrial mercantile support groups to form the committee. And then if you look at the responsibilities, their duties are the preparation of an economic development strategy, a policy on providing ad verum tax abatement, granting economic development incentives as permitted by law, establish guidelines for considering the above request and study other economic development concerns as directed by the board or requested by the city commission. You know, it would give input from the people in the industry that see trends and have more direct contact to recommend what's going on that we could benefit them. And then utilizing their input to develop the strategic plan would kind of put us in a, a new light, a new energy.
Kelly, do you know any of the background of this board? Did it, we had it for a while and then it became defunct or?
I think that they stopped utilizing it. I, I first thought MCAC was not in existence at the time this was adopted, but it appears it was because it's referred to.
Right.
But I think that rather than have each individual city in the county have their own board, it's, the focus has been to try and use MAC as a regional source. The theory that what benefits a region benefits all of us. Because you could get, without knowing it, you could be competing against an economic advisory board in one of the other cities. There's no provision for coordination. I mean, in previous meetings, you've talked about cooperating and I think that's what MCAC does. This almost is a step backwards. I think that's why they stopped using it. They just stopped appointing. When the appointments expire, they just stopped using it.
Yeah, my only question, and well, first, like you said, it does recognize that Chamber and Montgomery County Action Council are ex officio members, so it does provide that inner action to keep that from happening. But, you know, if you don't have a group specializing in the economic development, then why are we doing an economic development strategy?
The group is MCAC. I mean, we have a group, we participate.
And city staff. I mean, and we get involved in economic development, obviously. So, you know, another committee, depends on if you set clear goals, exactly what their duties are. I know it says somewhat there, but you don't, you don't want, you know, too many interacting boards on economic development.
Well, Ross, I, my comment to Craig was to maybe check with Trish and the other cities to see if this would be beneficial or not. It's on the books, you can do it, definitely.
That's, you know, what's it, what's it hurt to try?
Well, in my heard, I think you ought to check with Trish first to make sure it doesn't hurt. Because you don't want to do something that cataracts what she's doing.
No, they would work, this is looking, it's not, it's looking to an economic development strategy for independents. It's looking at providing ad verum tax abatement for independents. It's granting economic development incentives for independents. It's establishing guidelines to consider for the above requests and study other economic development concerns. So it's dealing mainly with, with how we're going to use our economic development money here. It's not saying to go out and solicit others in competition, but it's that liaison that it, it takes off of staff from doing everything else to allowing this committee to, to operate, to bring some incentives to tell us what's going to be beneficial for them, so.
I'm not arguing with you. It's on the books, it's certainly good. But I would, I would think you might want to check with the other cities and Trish first.
What do the commissioners think?
Well, MCAC, they wouldn't actually have anything to do as far as what the city would consider as providing ad verum tax abatements, would that be right? And other incentives that would pertain strictly to just economic development within the city of independents. So we're not actually-
I'm not sure what you're saying is that the MAC does get specific and with terms of incentives from independents for a given project. For example, if they get a lead from the state, the state said, here's a business looking for 50 employees, Trish and MAC will come to the city and they'll say, are you willing still to do that incentive of a thousand dollars per job? So they do, they do work with coming to the city and I'm sure that's what you were saying, but, but, yeah, they do work with, if the cities, if that project's interested in independence, they work for independence. They may put it in both, when they put it, they put a coffee bill and one in. You know, so they do the regional, and economic development nowadays is regional, as you know. But, but, so I just want to make clear that they, they will come to us if there's a project that would go in independence. They would ask if we're willing to do these incentives. They would ask if we're willing to do these incentives, which we have said yes in the past, whether it's, you know, it's on the book, we have our incentives, property tax reduction, and or we do job. They create so many jobs over a year, they get
I see the MAC as a recruiter, but then this is an advisory board that works within the town on how we can improve economic development for existing businesses or that contact that once MAC finds somebody interested in Independence, you've got that board then that can start catering with MAC to make things happen here. That they're the one making recommendations on the use of, of the ad verum abatements or economic development incentives, that they kind of help be the, go between
And we also work with the Chamber as part of that group, you know, MAC and the Chamber and the city if it's a given project, or even if it's a project that, yeah, they're strictly like, what's that chicken outfit that we've been
Tyson.
Tyson. You know, they, we are involved in that because we know economic development is regional and it will help us as well. So even if they're looking over there, we're involved. But if you get some good expertise, again, the committee to me is only as good as who you appoint and have that expertise and can really help drive that. Another thing we're looking at in working with the city of Coffeyville regarding retail development, they're, they're using a firm called Retail Strategies and the, the company has offered to do the same thing for Independence and reduce the cost for both. So we both get a good deal. They would save some money on, on their annual fee. And it's, it's a retail recruiter for, you know, Strategy. And, and they've had success over there. We're not ready to really talk about it, and we would like to, we would have, planning to have, of course, Trish and Lisa Wilson and this person from Retail Strategies to come and present that concept. Because I've, I've looked at, I've looked at some of these recruiting firms for retail and so forth. And they're, the one, the one that's very good, but it was fifty thousand bucks a year, I was like, I really can't afford that. You know, but twenty-five thousand out of the Economic Development Fund, you know, they work both Coffeyville and, and here, that might be doable. It'd be up to you, of course, but, but that's, that's in the works that we're trying to, again, part of our economic development strategy, so.
I, I guess my question was that, that, that we would actually determine what abatements and the incentives would be, it would be, she would come and say, what could you provide? And we would say, well, here's what we will be willing to do, rather than she would make a commitment, well, the, the city of Independence will do this.
Yeah, well, she, that's, she has some set ones, we have some set ones that are already
In place.
Pre-approved. That, that so that she has that authority, she can, but even though like the thousand job, thousand dollars per job, that's a kind of standard one. We've done, we've made that offer, but she still comes and asks us, are you willing to continue to do that for this, for this, so she can put that in, in our proposal?
So then MCAC is actually basically providing
Well, I think
Some of this now, but, but it's, it's all being directed by Trish. I mean, we don't actually
Well, I have, you know, remember the board is made up of several representatives from each community. I think we've got five from Independence
Kind of the most.
On the board. And, and other communities have, and it's kind of prouded by the size of your community, how much, you know, you pay into it as well. So we, there is some good expertise on those, on that board.
In reference to this other board, the, on record, the last people that I have on there, their terms expired in either two thousand four or two thousand six, which means it was inactive prior to that because they weren't, they didn't reappoint in two thousand four. And at that time, those members were Dr. Judith Hanson, who was the president of ICC at the time, Chuck Goode, Mike Sellar, Alan Defoe, Jim Kelly, Hub Meyer, and Don Hill. So that's what I have on record as who was on it at last.
This document says it was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, so.
This is, this is the last members that were on it before they saw, I mean, I could go back and
I'm just saying, if it started in ninety-eight, it only lasted about six years, it sounds like.
Yeah, apparently, I, I could go back into the staff report when it was created and see what their reasoning was at that time. I could do some research if you would like.
I think it was
Yeah, the notes.
I would say that was right after Sesna's coming, if that's when it was created.
Well, and at that time, we had all these developers approaching the city and there was a lot of activity and stuff going on anticipating what Sesna was gonna do. Of course, at one time, they had over a thousand employees, so.
So I guess see, the question is, do we want to see if there's interest of any members in the industry that would serve on an economic development board? And if not, drop it. And then if there is, then gather and just brainstorm to see the, the direction that they feel before we form it. You know, we don't have to go ahead, but you know, if we're gonna do a strategic plan for economic development, it seems like it would be appropriate to have a group in the city that's going to use the information other than another, another book on the shelf and another task for the staff that's already overworked to, to take on. You know, when Roger Brooks came and gave his presentation, he talked about you want to get a, a group of champions, not existing staff or anyone, but people from the community to task them with it because of their energy and their input and their, their potential to add to instead of being burdened down. So that's kind of the same thing here. It could be that, that new involvement, the new set of energy, new, new vision. And, you know, if we want to talk to see if we can find people interested and then have one of our special commission meetings come in and go over what the city ordinance says and brainstorm with them. And maybe everybody walks and says, it's not worth doing. But maybe they would be the, the ones to take it to have a new light, a new, new insight or new vision of it. And, you know, not come back and just burden our staff with another task.
I know there are a lot of people that feel like economic development is our number one priority. And there are several groups that meet informally to talk about economic development. There's a group of us that meets regularly as part of the Main Streets efforts to talk about economic development and on many different levels, like, like this thing that's on the screen. You know, you have things that help economic development and things that hinder economic development. And we've heard many times in the past, the city has hindered economic development because we didn't have a good procedure for this kind of thing. So there are clearly a lot of people very interested in this. And I didn't, I didn't, didn't realize there was something already official in place to have an economic development advisory board. So I'd, I'd like further information. I'd like to know why it ran out of steam, you know, exactly what happened, if we can find that out. Talk to those names you just mentioned, you know, how did it go and why did it die?
A lot of the names, though, are already involved in a lot of other things, too.
Yeah, yeah, including MAC.
It's the same thing of, of overburdening the same people. So, you know, that's, that's something that we've got seven members, each of us talk to people we know and say, hey, would you be interested, you know, take a copy of this and here's your, the responsibilities we're looking at. We can modify that, we, you know, get input to get a, a new direction, sit down. If we don't find seven people that are interested in doing it, then we don't drop, we don't do anything. If we find that there are seven that say, yeah, you know, I'd be interested in, and, and get new, new blood. You know, not people that are already overworked with other things. But just see, you know, get, get a representative from some of the industries there that could maybe have a, a member of their team appointed. So we get direct representation from an industry, from a manufacturer, from a, a supply industry, from retail or restaurant, you know, somebody that's, so.
According to your statement, Gary, that you had made earlier, there are people that are involved that that are not serving on committees
Not official.
Not official, anyway, have maybe indirect input. So it sounds like maybe there are people available. Maybe we ought to approach it from that angle. Let's see what the interest, let's see what kind of interest generates from this and get a little background on, on, like you indicated, why that, why it disbanded in two thousand and four, and to just kind of see where this takes us. And if, if there's interest, if there isn't, then, you know, we, we follow the trail out. And if it ends in a dead end, it ends in a dead end.
Yeah, I'd certainly like to know from Don Hill or Chuck Goode, just as two examples, you know, how it played out before, because again, I don't think there's anything more important than economic development. And, and that covers a wide range of, of things. You know, this, one woman took me to task this morning for supporting the brewery, saying, we should be doing economic development, not things like the brewery. And I said, well, wait a minute, in my opinion, that is economic development, because we're making it a more enticing place to live. And I've heard people say, wow, I'm excited about Independence because you've got some fun things coming. So I think things like that are economic development, but others feel like, you know, we're wasting our time. So it's a, it's a big, big, wide topic.
And it, it's got to be diverse, too. That you've got to, you've got to look at a lot of ways to bring economic development.
Yeah.
That what I might be interested in, no one else would.
Right.
One thing to look at, and when you look at why something didn't work, is to see them, well, let's not do that, let's make it work. You know, you can't, you can't always say, well, it didn't work that time, we abandoned it, so it won't go again. But okay, it didn't work because of, now let's make it go a different direction to see if it'll work.
Yeah, you mentioned Roger, that was here, what, six, five, six years ago? And, you know, like, one of his strongest recommendations was, we need to revamp our signs, which we've talked and talked about, but we've never done. And he gives regular webinars that, there's a group that meets here in this room to hear his webinars every time he gives them. So, I mean, those people are excited about economic development. There's a lot of people out there, maybe not enough, but. So if, if this is the best way to do it, I'm all for it, but I would like to know how it played out before.
So should we contact some people to see if we can find
I would
Interested in serving?
That, for me, that wouldn't be the first step. The first step would be to talk to Trish and the people that were on it before and get a little bit more background about why they decided to disband or whether it just, they just ran out of steam. But, but, you know, if we, I, I, I'm for anything that will help economic development. We're, we're, we're very stagnant, it feels like to me, so.
If we could task them a different direction that the one that ran out of steam went, then.
Yep, I'm, I agree. I saw you here, we, you know, we need economic development, we need jobs, we need jobs in the community, in, in the county that will bring people into the community and to the county to increase our tax base. So anything that we could do that would help, I, I mean, we wanted to do whatever it is we need to do.
And if we don't, if we don't do something, then how can we say that we're concerned about economic development? If we're willing to not try something, then are we concerned about economic development?
Well, you remember, it's, economic development was the number one directive of the plan that we adopted, you adopted. So it came out very strongly as important and, and going through a process as being responsible for it as a staff. You know, I, I would have, there's, there's two ways of doing this, I guess. You can have a formal advisory board or an informal group. And I would, at a minimum, I was gonna have an informal group. I was gonna be, you know, a committee, and I was just gonna have a few key people that I know that are good at it, ask them if they would, you know, assist in some of the action steps that we've developed for economic development. I, you put them in a formal way, you know, I'd try to use them the same way, but but yeah, we, that's our number one goal, but it's a five-year goal. And economic development is difficult, and that's why we're looking at Retail Strategies as a, as a way to kind of help us to bring retail, especially the more retail downtown, so. I won't turn away help.
So get an idea if we can find people interested and then bring back that information?
Yep, let's do that. See what interest is out there. And who would be willing to step forward? And then come back and report what we've found out. Okay. Any, anything else, gentlemen, on those topics?
I'm good.
Good?
No.
Okay. Okay, moving along. You've all had to look, had a chance to look at the city board minutes. Any questions, any comments about that?
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, city manager's comments, right?
Sure, you asked me to comment on the city hall, city hall projects, so I put together, we have, we'll have some slides, but also I wanted you to have it in writing, the timeline. I assume you just met recently when we, when you talked about delays or, or things. I mean, I didn't know how far to go back to twenty tw- twenty ten or go through the timeline or, but what I've, what I've handed out to you, first of all, you asked about the marketing, you had questions on the marketing.
Yes.
I'll just quickly touch on the marketing. We talked, we've talked to a trainer, the architects, and about marketing the building. And they believe, as, as I note there, that marketing temporary city hall would be premature at this point. Because one, the decision's not made of exactly what's gonna happen with the property that we're using now for fire. So would we have to split up that property in, in order to market it in different ways? And plus, we, we don't know, we, we feel it's too early to start marketing, given that we don't know when phase two is even going to start construction, so we don't have an end date even possible. So it's, it's a good two years. If you look down the list, you see the phase one contractor has four hundred and twenty-seven days. So his estimated finish date is twenty, twenty, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Anyway, so we feel it's a little premature to start marketing. Plus, there's been some local interest in the building, but, so that's, that's our feeling right now is it's not a good time to start marketing. And Jeff mentioned before the meeting that he actually called a couple of realtors about listing it. And one of them said, what, you're wasting your time? And the other one said, yeah, we'll list it, but just to list it, you can pay for it. So anyway, that's, that's our, our recommendation is not to start marketing it right now until we have some better answers. And then phase one, just is getting going, and I, I do a timeline there. March twenty-sixth is when we submitted the part two tax credits. And of course, that was critical, you had to have those approved before we could start actual construction. You had to have those approved before we could start actual construction. June 11th, we, we sent a notice to proceed for the pre-construction. That's the way the architects had laid it out, to do a pre-construction notice to proceed. We sent that on the 11th. On the 17th, we received notification from the state that the tax credit application was approved. And, and then we sent it, I sent it to Trainer on the June 19th to, so they would have it for their records as well because the, the tax credit information comes to the city. And just today, since we have that tax credit, we're working with the architect during, today we were able to send out a notice to proceed for construction, which the start date is July 29th. And there's a further explanation down below on the July 29th date. This July 2015, there'll be a pre-construction meeting with both G, the general contractor and the abatement contractor present. Also on July 15th, the abatement is scheduled to start and, and schedule to finish on July 29th in 11 days. And as you see there, PSI believes that the contractor will have no trouble meeting that 11-day schedule for abatement. And then on the 29th, again, that's the start date for the general contractor, start construction. Again, finishing 427 days later on September 28, 2020, although as you noted there, they think they can shorten that time, timeline. Working, the architects working with Hofer and Hofer, Hofer and Hofer. They can hopefully shorten that timeframe. So the next step is for the architects to meet with the city commission. As you know, we met, the staff met with Trainer, Andy Pitts and Ian Pitts on Tuesday to go over the programming of, of the facility, the buildings, what's, what we see as need for to go in the, in the building and even city hall and or another facility for public safety. They've suggested a couple of dates, the 8th or the 15th of August. Of course, the 8th is already a commission meeting, but we would like to hold the, these, these, this meeting at 10:00 AM. It facilitates travel and much better, but, but that's, that's one of the questions we would, if, we'd like to hear from you on if you could meet those, on those dates. Either date is, is acceptable to the architects to meet with you to get your thoughts. And any preference? Actually, the 8th is, the 8th is, is a commission meeting already, so you'd be meeting at 10:00, then you'd come back at 5:30. Of course, Kelly and I will keep the meeting to about two items and so it'll be, yeah.
Lucky.
I'm, sometimes I kid, so. Sometimes people don't catch that.
Yeah, I, I, right off the bat, I can't think of anything that I've got either day, but as sure as I tell you that, there is something.
Yeah, I need to, I need to check, see which works best.
Just get back, yeah, you can just email me back and say which day works or which day doesn't work and, and hopefully we'll have a, everybody will line up on one of those days.
My calendar's open both days. So you can note that now.
Put that on my spreadsheet.
Okay, all right. Craig, thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig.
All right, Commissioner, moving on, Commissioner comments. Gary?
No.
I'm good. Do we have any public concerns? No, okay. And we're moving on to the first executive session. That involves Chief Harrison, or SRO Dustin and Jeff and.
You need to read the notice, Craig.
Craig? Okay. Okay. I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75 dash 4319B1. And how much, gentlemen, how much time? 20 minutes or more?
20.
Would 20 be sufficient?
15, a good start.
A good start.
Kerry's feeling chatty tonight.
Make it 20?
10, 15.
Do I hear 7?
17, 15.
15.
7:05, so you'll be back at 7:20.
7:20, okay. Yes.
Second.
Do I have a motion?
You motioned.
I did motion, sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
And you said 7:20? Okay. Gotcha. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kerry's. Okay, let's do this. Okay, we are back in session, sorry. And, and at, we're getting ready to go back in session for another executive session. And it reads, I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75 dash 4319B1. And this will be for, let's go 20 minutes. And this will be, this, one will just be the commissioners. And it is about 7:20, what, two, three?
So, 7:45.
Okay, so 20 minutes would be 7.
42.
42? Okay, I make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all right. We are back in session and we're going to go back into session again for 20 minutes. And it is 7:42. 8:02, 8:02. Now, so I make a motion that we go back into executive session and this will be the three commissioners, Craig and Jeff. And do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we are back in session. And we're going to go back out of session for 15 minutes. And it is 8:02, is that right? So we're looking at 8:17. And do I have a?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are back in session and we're going back out of session again for five minutes. So we're looking at 8:18. 8:22. Five minutes, gentlemen, would that be sufficient? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're back in session and we're going back out for an additional 10 minutes. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That'll be 8:35, is that right, Dave? 8:35, okay. Good, okay, okay. We are back in session and at this time, we're going to adjourn. So I make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Gary.
What? Who's Kerry?
Gary.
Kerry, Kerry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.